All right, let's get into some reading. Please stand and join us in the conference room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and thank you for joining the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll call this regular school board meeting for independent school district number 544 to order. And clerk, will you please establish our quorum?
Certainly.
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson. Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present. Steven Vigasson.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. I'm seeking a motion to approve the agenda that is before us. Would someone offer that motion?
Someone move.
All right, and a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved, and we'll launch right into reports this evening. And tonight, we'll start with Krista Simgard, who's going to talk to us about the talent development curriculum. Welcome, Krista.
Good evening, thank you for having me. We created our talent development program to follow the multi-tiered system of support framework. Our intent is to challenge and develop all students. To do so, we will start at the base of the multi-tiered system of support. So tier one, that core instruction all students receive. They receive differentiation in the classroom, and students in K through three will receive an Otter Scholars lesson one to two times a month. Otter Scholars is a platform for talents to emerge and to be nurtured through exposure and enrichment, particularly around critical and creative thinking strategies. Students learn that what it means to be a convergent, divergent, visual, and evaluative thinker through the PETS curriculum, which stands for primary education thinking skills. Each lesson begins with a story that explains the puzzle or the skill for that lesson, and it's followed by an activity. Students have really enjoyed these lessons and have expressed their eagerness for me to visit their classroom and passing in the hall. The tier two, the targeted intervention for some, this is in the form of enrichment groups in math and reading. Currently, the math curriculum is pulled from our everyday math curriculum, as well as supplemented using Beast Academy for when students return to their classrooms. Reading enrichment groups have been a combination of book clubs and lessons from the Jacob's Ladder comprehension program. And so, to be identified as a student for the enrichment groups, students can be identified by meeting two areas in our criteria. So, one of those is the COGAT, they need to score an eight or nine. They need to be two levels above in Star Reading and math. And we also look at the MCA and MAP scores, as well as writing samples. The tier three is more of an intensive individualized intervention level for very few. This would include single subject acceleration or whole grade acceleration. Criteria is very similar, except that we require a nine on the COGAT, or ninety-five percent or better, national state norms for MCA and MAP. So, those are the different services that we provide at each of those levels. And I believe that you were provided with that spreadsheet of different materials. Do you have any questions for me about that or the program?
So what's the scale on the COGAT? Like, what's the mass, is it ten?
Nine is the highest.
Nine is the highest, okay. And this is just for, like, once this is up and running, it's gonna be second grade will for sure get the test?
Second and fourth grade.
Second and fourth, okay.
Yep.
How many of those lessons that you mentioned earlier have you been able to give?
So this year, I've given for, to third and fourth grade. I've given to fourth grade using the third grade curriculum. There are twelve lessons, and so far, let's see, I've given about eight.
Any other questions?
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, our next report will be from Scott, no, no Scott Colbeck tonight.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Run.
Principal Run from Cleveland Elementary.
Round up at the time.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Colbeck's over at Kinley for kindergarten registration tonight.
So, I'm probably gung ho on traffic in Kinley right now.
I'm sure they are.
Can you imagine?
Well, today marks the first day of third quarter, and, or no, third quarter, fourth quarter. And I'd just like to kind of mention to parents that we, at the elementary level, we send third quarter progress reports home with students this coming Friday, April 1st. So to look in their backpacks and check on the information that's coming home with their students. Today, to kick off fourth quarter and kick off our new adventure at Cleveland, we had a gathering in the Cleveland gym this afternoon and introduced our One Book, One School read to our student body. And we had a lot of fun with this. The students received, had a mystery box delivered to their classroom last Thursday, so there was a little suspense to lead up to today. They got to open their mystery box this morning, and every student received a copy of our book read that's titled Clementine by Sarah Penny Packer. And today, we had an actual Clementine arrive in the gym, and our very own assignment guard dressed up as Clementine. Joined, joined the kickoff, so that created a lot of fun. But a big thank you to our Otter PTO for supporting these efforts. They did this very thing at Adams earlier this year, and we're excited to join them, or to kind of join in on the excitement of sharing a one school, one book. Clementine is a third grade girl, and there's another girl named Margaret in the story. And this whole book covers the span of one week in Clementine's life. And it starts as she's not having a very good day, and she's trying in all sorts of ways throughout the book to help out, but it just doesn't seem to go so well for her. But it'll, it's a fun read, lots of giggles, lots of silly moments where it kind of tickles the students fancy, and we had lots of laughter in the gym today. So to, this is gonna span the next three weeks, and every student got a bookmarker with a reading schedule on the back. So this is our guide. So we're encouraging them to bring the home, bring the book home, read the, read a chapter with a family member or parent, and then the following day, that chapter will be read aloud in their classroom for all to enjoy. So, a new adventure for us, and it's really, really exciting. Looking ahead to the month of April, we have our Minnesota Comprehensive assessment scheduled for April twentieth through the twenty-second for reading. And then the math assessment is that very following week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. And we were able to narrow this window down this year because we will have students testing on their Chromebooks that they're now familiar with using, testing in their classrooms, and we'll be able to do eight classrooms at a time. So, four on the east wing of the building and four on the west wing test at the same time. Thanks to Sherry Simon, or Sherry Bernard, she develops a really pretty slick testing schedule that allows kids to not have to miss FIAID or music, but rather use those core instructional times. So, students will have two seventy-five minute testing sessions for each subject area, and then, it is an on-time test, so it's, we accommodate for those who prefer to have some additional testing time in addition to that. And then I also wanted to mention, mid-March, parents of third, current third and fourth grade students received a letter regarding their child's registration for next school year. So there are a lot of plans underway already, as you know, in planning for next school year. And this year, we're asking parents to log onto their ParentView account and where they will access all of their child's student information, their student's information system. We're asking them to indicate their, their child's preference for Prairie Science class there, update any demographic changes, emergency contacts. And the system, I logged on as a parent just to experience the system, and it really is nice, it just goes page by page, kind of a guide through the information that pertains to their child, and allows them to make changes and update that. So, we're asking parents to please complete that by Monday, April 4th, so that we can begin utilizing that updated, those updated preferences. So that's what I brought for you this evening. All right, very good. Any questions for Principal Run?
So Tindy, with the ParentView, I just remember having to like re-enter everything in again. Is it actually, is it saving the information now, so parents don't have to like?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, that information's saved.
Maybe that was synergy, maybe that was the previous system or something.
Well, and that is the system, it is synergy.
Oh, is it, okay.
But each parent has a ParentView account where they can go in and they can check their students' grades, attendance.
Right, yep, I use that.
Yep.
I didn't realize that was, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So we rely on our tech department to, at the magic hour roll, roll that information over into the next school year.
Okay.
So that's, it's there.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Principal Evan Hurst will report middle school afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're a little under the weather here, so I'm masking up. Good news for us, safe for us to school, bike fleet earned a grant recently. We were very fortunate, we worked with the SHIP grant, and the Department of Transportation awarded us just over fifteen thousand dollars to tune up our current bike fleet, as well as install kickstands, so they're not getting dropped on the ground repeatedly. The grant will also be used to purchase ten new bikes, a specialty hand cycle trike, and a specialty recumbent disability bike, so we can meet the needs of all of our students. So working with the FIAID teachers in grade seven and eight, as well as the SHIP people, we're excited to get this up and rolling. So, there is a resolution later in the board packet, so we can move on and take the next steps. But good news for us. A few weeks ago, we were fortunate to have our speaker, Dr. Anton Troyer. He's a professor of Bemidji State, he was with us for a couple of days. He spoke to all middle school students in two separate sessions, and he also spoke with our REACH students in a smaller, more intimate session. His talk focused on how he grew up, he shared stories about his parents and his current family, and some of the traditions that were a part of his growing up. What we realized at the end of the talk is that we are all more alike than we are different. Lots to think about. Tindy hit on the end of the quarter, which is last week, grades are gonna be mailed out at the end of this week, and then she also mentioned the registration process as well. And then I want to just do a shout out to the Staff Development Committee. Last Friday, we had our staff, a morning workshop for certified and non-certified staff. There were three one-hour sessions that staff signed up in, signed up for in advance. There were sessions on topics such as suicide awareness, SEL implementation, differentiated instruction, and restorative circles. There were many positive comments during and after the morning, so a job well done to the Staff Development Committee. And then I just wrap it up with lots of discussions going on for next year, as we plan, and there's been some hiring, and so on and so forth. So there's a, it's just a really busy time of the year, spring. Nigga?
Any questions for Principal Hurst?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, get better. Principal Mark Hanson, high school, ALC and IQ.
Good evening. Well, I'd first like to thank Mr. Tulkey, he had a great Winterfest plan, and then we actually had our snowball last Saturday night. We had about two hundred and fifty kids sign up, and then we had about two hundred more attend that night and pay, so they had a blast. It was one of the most well-attended snowball dances that Shane could remember, so that was great, they appreciated it, and they did a great job. Next up, prom, April juniors and seniors, they're already excited about that. Congratulations, obviously, to the Otter Girls Basketball Team, and I'm not sure if you have heard, Coach Steer was nominated as the Two Way Coach of the Year, so congratulations to him. Hopefully, the Wi-Fi works in the district long enough, we'll be testing, MCA testing in the media center, and it sounds like about everybody near Cleveland and KSS is gonna be online testing. Our sophomores start us out with reading, then they do science the following week, and then we do our math with our eleventh graders after they've taken the ACT test on April 5th. We presented to them last week, out of them all registered, ready to go, so we'll see how that goes, and hopefully, we see some shoulders relax after April and get into May when all the assessments are finished for the students. As I even spoke about, we had a number of opportunities on Friday for professional development. They were absolutely amazing. Our staff can, is still talking about them, looking forward to some more of the same types of learning moving forward, so again, thank you to the Staff Development Committee. One of the things we have offering now, as we had some students come forward who are wanting to be in the healthcare field, we started a HOSA club, which is Health Occupation Students of America. It is student-led, I started as their advisor, and then Ms. Stacker took over for them as their advisor, and she's a local nurse in the medical field, so that is even better for us. They're meeting, they're putting a banner together at us, the hang, so everybody knows that we have the HOSA here, and they're getting more and more students all the time to sign up. These are sophomore young ladies who decided to take this on, and now they're gathering more people every time they meet, so they're doing a wonderful job. At the ALC, last week, I had a great opportunity to stay here and watch the ALC come over and do their talent show. What talent do we have sitting over there that came over to perform for us? The kids that sang for us at the talent show had not sang in our high school choir since they were ninth graders and made the move over. There's seniors, I was hoping they would try out and come back and play for us, or sing for us next year, but they're graduating. One of the things Kristin and I have worked on is our ALC students have registered through her, she'll give me those names, they're gonna take some of our elective courses next year here at KSS, or at Fergus Falls High School, and down at the rec, and be part of us again, and coming back and being in those classrooms because they're interested in them. We do have three kids down there in choir who tried out to audition for the elite choir group, and one chose to stay in the regular band for next year as a sophomore, so that's exciting. Students at ALC also are participating and planning to participate in International FIAID Forward Day in April. They start the planning this week, and they'll plan over the next couple of weeks in their guide to study all over there. It'll be interesting to see what they come up with, they always are creative. Kristin, obviously, is working, getting ready for summer programming, and is talking to all of us about what those opportunities look like. So we'll have a full building here this summer again, hopefully, and see a lot of kids in the building. At IQ, IQ staff has had conferences, they focused on students who had two or more Fs, that was their priority, to get the connections with the families and the parents, to find supports and how they can get them back into passing classes. Ryan has been out the last couple of weeks, testing in the greater Minnesota area, so he's staying overnight out of Fergus, and testing kids in MCA because they're considered to be part of us. So, he's enjoying that, I think, maybe not. He and I are working on registration, and I have a meeting about staffing coming up to figure out what that looks like for IQ and what we could plan for, for next year. And the last two weeks, we have actually had our first two students from IQ Academy become Otters of the Week. Two staff members nominated them, and they are really excited about being one of the Otters of the Week the last two weeks, so. Any questions?
I just wanted to, I'm just looking at our Facebook page, and I saw last week, it was four days ago, that our Knowledge Bowl team got second in regions, so they're going to state, so I just wanna give a shout out to them too. First time in fifteen years, I think, or over fifteen.
And we just got an email, I just thought about that too, our OtterBots?
Yep.
Are possibly qualifying for state, maybe.
Okay.
Looking at that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report from Superintendent Drake.
Well, good evening. I'm happy that it's starting to look a little bit more spring-like out there, but another twenty degrees on the temperature wouldn't hurt anything. I want to start out with a couple thank yous. My first one goes to Mr. Stoltman, who's been with the district now two-plus years as our finance director, has a really good head on his shoulders, and has helped this district navigate the complications of the Lincoln School project, and numerous LTFM projects, and a host of other financial challenges, and you're gonna be missed. It's been a pleasure working with you, and we certainly on behalf of the district wish you the very best. Also wanted to thank the Staff Development Committee, we really have had some dynamic work coming out of that group over the last couple of years, and repeatedly hearing very positive feedback from the things that are coming out of that committee from our faculty and staff. As part of that philosophy, we have taken some extra efforts to make sure that all of our staff is aware that those staff development opportunities are for everybody, and so we've had an increasing number of our parent professionals attending some of those trainings as well, which is nice to see. Some of the big news, again, is that Class AA state runner-up from our girls' basketball team, and those girls, the managers, the coaching staff, really represented themselves, our school and our community with distinction. Very, very proud of them, what a remarkable season and journey they've taken. And my appreciation to the school and the community for all the support that they lent the girls down there. Fergus Falls just travels extremely well in support of their teams, and that was very evident down at the U of M. As was alluded to earlier, Coach Steer was the Minnesota Girls Basketball Coach, Coaching Association Coach of the Year, very well deserved. One of the things that I typically do is just watch coaches and how they conduct themselves on the sidelines, and again, what a great representation he was of our school and community. Classy, emotionally under control in a high-pressure situation, and certainly, his leadership with that girls' program was very evident through the course of the year. When you look at where that team started out, and what they were doing at the end of that season, just an extremely remarkable job that he did in leading that program. We have a Knowledge Bowl team that is heading to state. From what I understand here on the sheet, it's been over fifteen years since that's happened, so congratulations to all those participants. The state meet will be on April 7th and 8th at Cragins over by Brainerd, and I have had the pleasure of witnessing that before, and it is quite, it's quite a competition. They are, there are three teams competing in the room at any one time, and the person asking the questions will start out, and maybe some cases get three or four words out, and someone is already hitting the buzzer. So it's, it is something, if you ever get a chance to see it, it is worth your trip over there. So good luck and congratulations to our Otter Knowledge Bowl team. We also had National History Day, a number of students, and unfortunately, the spot's kind of small, but we have state participants in both the junior and senior division, so congratulations to them. The theme was debate and diplomacy in history, successes, failures, and consequences. And also mentioned our OtterBot team, they had made the semifinals at least, and then I couldn't track anything beyond that, so I'm not sure where that competition ended up, but certainly, that team had a very, very strong showing. And then we do receive a tremendous amount of support from Otter Power Company with that program too, so I want to express my appreciation to them. I had mentioned the viewpoint software, that it's a data warehouse software that the district has now purchased. A number of us had some training on that software on Friday afternoon. I just want to give the board a very, very quick glimpse of some of the things that that software can do. This happens to be, and this is a long way away from my aging eyes, but this happens to be an MCA chart. One is for eighth graders, one is reading, one is math, but it will indicate very quickly in a pie graph, the number of students in each of the categories, so the data is very easy to bring up. This is just a slide, but on the live document, you could click on any of those wedges, and it would bring up the students that comprise each of those categories. So if you wanted to get a list of students that maybe could use a little extra support in the area of reading, it's just a click away, so it's very, very handy. This one is on attendance, so the one to my right is tardies, and this, I was picking on our seniors a little bit, so both of these data points are from the senior class, but you can look at these district-wide, you can pick out individual grades, and it gives you information on why students are gone, et cetera. And you can, of course, drill down to the individual student level on any of these things. If we wanted to look at a particular student, we could look at their schedule, we can look at their historical longitudinal test results, we can look at their attendance, we could look at disciplinary records, all through the system very, very easily. And then on the last piece is a disciplinary breakdown by incident. Again, this was just for grade twelve, most of them having to do with attendance. So, that's a viewpoint, that's just a very, very small slice of viewpoint. Some of the other things that you can do is create customizable reports that teachers can do. The other thing you can do is create Venn diagrams or Venn charts. So let's say, for example, I wanted to know the number of ninth graders who had missed ten or more days of school and had three or more Fs. I can put those criteria into the system, and it'll, it'll kick out the list of names of the students that meet all of those criteria. So it's going to make utilizing data much more user-friendly for us, as we look at instructional practice, as we look at how students are responding from, with our rules and regulations on the student discipline piece, and then also on attendance, to name just a few. This one was, again, test performance, oh, this was the COGAT. So we talked about the COGAT, this happens to be grade four COGAT, and again, if this were a live document, we could click on any one of the segments of the pie chart and see which students comprise each of those areas for performance purposes. And as we look at COGAT as being one of the criteria for the talent development pull-out program, to have access to this kind of database saves hours and hours and hours of going through results by hand. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
So Jeff, with that, with that program, how far, how far back does the data go?
I had them go back six years, I believe.
I was just thinking, pre-COVID, post-COVID.
Yep, that'll be in there.
Awesome.
I just wanted to echo one thing on Blake, as a treasurer, I probably spend more time with Blake than any other board member.
You're gonna miss him?
Appreciate it. And then the other thing I just wanted to talk about is real briefly, our girls' basketball. I wasn't able to make it down there, but I watched it online on KSTP, and it was an incredibly detailed picture, and I thought they did a great job. And I kept seeing this familiar face all the time behind our bench, and it was our board member Matt. So I appreciate everything that she does for our basketball program. Obviously, they're doing something right when we can take second in state, so it's not just the, it's not just the high school team, it's the whole feeder system, and it goes, it starts, it starts way down there, so appreciate what you did, and yeah, it was fun to see, and I mean, they panned our student, the camera panned our student body many times, and it was fun, we were able to see our grandkids, and I saw my brother a couple times, and again, I saw Matt, like, over and over again, so awesome. So anyway, it was fun, it was fun to watch, even though we weren't there, it was like we're there, and it was, I mean, you got the computer right there. So, but it was a very, very well-done broadcast, and I appreciate the ability to watch from here. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on with the agenda, the next item is our general consent items, which include our minutes from the last board meeting on March 14th, and then over to Elaine Jongki for our personnel maneuvers here.
Good evening, everyone. We have a number of changes once again, and I expect that to only grow and continue as we get through the spring here, and into the summer months. For certified staff hires and contract changes, Michaela Bosch, she will be our high school band teacher next year. Some contract changes, Mindy Christensen, she'll be taking an overload in language arts. Jackie Sibinaller, also an overload. And Jennifer Jensen, she'll be doing some substitute teaching for Matern Daily, so filling in with substitute contract with that. Certified staff resignations, we have Kayla Norberg, our ESL teacher, Joy Miller. Also, part-time ESL teacher with our IQ Academy, Hannah Herzog, elementary teacher, happens to be a first grade teacher. happens to be a first grade teacher at Adams. And so we want to definitely thank them for their service here at the Fergus Falls Schools and sad to see them go, but wish them the best as they start a new adventure. Certified staff retirements, Marcy Ugstead and Karen Trosbit. And we have resolutions further on in a new business for those two. Support staff hire, Madison Rockel, she'll be helping us out with, as a special ed pair over at Adams. She will be returning back to Adams. She used to work in that same capacity a few years back, so we're excited to welcome her back. And support staff retirement, Carol Shower Sanderson, special ed paraprofessional at Adams, and we also have a resolution in, under new business for her. And then the last items is the, we have an agreement with a new finance director named Renee Smith and that's effective starting May 2nd of this year through June 30th of 2024. And we have two notice of desires to negotiate, one from our custodial secretary group and the other from our food service association. So I would recommend all those items for board approval.
All right. Any, any discussions on the general consent items? Is there a motion to approve the general consent item?
Just move.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. We'll move on to our new business and we've been, had a presentation and, and had written documents in our packet and looking for a motion to approve the talent development curriculum. So I'm going to make that.
I'll make that motion.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. And that's approved. We'll move forward with the resolution on the retirement of Marcy Ugstead. Whereas Marcy Ugstead began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 2008. And whereas Marcy has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past fourteen years. And whereas Marcy has been a dedicated IQ science teacher for the district and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Marcy Ugstead for her fourteen years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. I will offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Burke, will you take a role on that please? Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes.
Steven Biggison?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right. Similarly, we'll have a resolution on the retirement of Karen Trosbit. Whereas Karen Trosbit began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in July 1995. And whereas Karen has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for twenty-seven years. And whereas Karen has been a dedicated special education teacher for the district and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Karen Trosbit for her twenty-seven years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution?
I will. Offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you. And a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggison?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you. Whereas Carol Shower Sanderson began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools on, in October 1988. And whereas Carol has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for twenty-three years. And whereas Carol has been a dedicated special education paraprofessional for the district and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Carol Shower Sanderson for her twenty-three years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion?
Steven Biggison?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We'll have a resolution for Safe Routes to School, which is abbreviated as SRTS, Safe Routes to School Booster Grant. Whereas Minnesota Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Program assists schools and communities by making it so youth of Minnesota can safely, confidently, and conveniently walk, bike, and roll to school and in daily life. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Transportation Safe Routes to School Program solicits applications to enable school and communities to implement safe route school planning implementation and programmatic activities. And whereas if Fergus Falls School District was awarded boost grant funds, these grant funds would be used to provide implementation activities to local communities to develop safe routes to school initiatives that increase safety and encourage more children to walk and bicycle to school. And whereas, whereas no lack, excuse me, no local match funding is required. And whereas SRTS programic activities will commence after the grant agreement is fully executed, then therefore be it resolved that Fergus Falls School District authorizes the middle school principal, Ivan Hurst, to enter into a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for financial assistance to fund the Safe Routes to School program and eligible expenses. And number two, that the principal, middle school principal, Ivan Hurst, is authorized to execute such an agreement and any amendments without further approval by the Fergus Falls School District School Board. Will someone offer that resolution?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
All right. And a quick question. Principal Hurst, is this separate from the, is this the same thing as the bike grant?
Yep. Yep, it's a, it's a enhancement, it's a continuation. I don't remember the year that the, that the bikes were first purchased, but wear and tear and they go that, that's why the program's continuing.
And, and will part of the overall activities, if, if we get the grant, include new routes and some of that additional stuff as well? Okay.
So we talked about that with our PE department and we have a couple of local community members that met with us and they indicated no supervision, right, is a concern. So they, they mentioned that they would be willing to help us with supervision during some of those classes.
Oh, okay.
So to get them to a safe place that they can ride, not thinking about traffic. We're thinking bike path. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thanks for that additional.
A quick question. So is this just the bikes or, you know, when I think about the route that they take to get to Roosevelt, is that, can that, it's just the bikes?
Yeah, we apply for, let me just grab my notes for a moment. Ten bikes of a little smaller size. We, a specialty hand trike and a specialty recumbent disability bike. And then we also need to tune up our current fleet and then we're adding kickstands. And now all told, that was about, that was just over fifteen thousand dollars. And we've already been awarded that.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any other questions before we proceed with the vote?
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes.
Steven Biggison?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. And that concludes our meeting agenda for this evening. After we adjourn, we'll have a work session with a multitude of items, including meet and confer, COVID reporting, facilities, marketing, and then just anything else that rises to the top. Is there a motion to adjourn meeting? So, all right, okay, from Missy and a second, from Steven, any discussion? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.